So my name is Wendy McNeil. And on behalf of Donna Ward, who just sat down, the president, and the members of the League of Women Voters of the Montclair area, I would like to welcome you to tonight's Candidates Forum. The forum is designed to give you a better understanding of the beliefs and the values of the six candidates who are running for the three seats on the Montclair Board of Ed. I have often heard former Governor Tom Kaine say, "Without an informed public, democracy dies." By attending this forum tonight, you will be a better informed public when you cast your vote on November 5. And to the six candidates, thank you for giving your time, your experience, and your energy in your desire to serve the township's students and their families. And I would like to end by thanking our community partners. First, the Montclair Public Library for allowing us to use their facilities and their technology for free. And second, the Montclair Local. Under the leadership of its publisher, Liz George, the Montclair Local has shown this community why high-quality local news outlets are so important. The Montclair Local has been educating the public about the candidates by publishing their profiles and their statements on why they are running. The Montclair Local also collected your questions and helped the League of Women Voters in marketing the event. So thanks to the Montclair Local for being such a wonderful local partner and for keeping the residents of our township informed about what really matters. The League of Women Voters of the Montclair area is a nonpartisan, volunteer-driven organization. Our main job is to make sure that every person is registered to vote and exercises that ineligible right to vote. So before I end, I'm going to urge you to vote on November 5. And if you have any questions or concerns about your right to vote, please contact us by going to l w v montclair area dot org. And I'll repeat that. L W V M O N T C L A I R A R E A dot org. Now, I would like to introduce you to the moderator, Kathy Kazan. Ms. Kazan is a member of the League of Women Voters of the Wayne Township, and she is one of the League's trained moderators. Ms. Kazan.
Thank you, Wendy. Good evening, and thank you to the Montclair Area League of Women Voters, along with their co-sponsors, for organizing this important event. Thank you all for being here, and to those watching at home. Most importantly, thank you to the candidates for running for this very important community position. About this forum, candidates are seated in two groups. There are three candidates running independently and three candidates running as a slate. You are not obligated to vote for every member of the slate. You will vote for the individual. I will be your moderator for this evening, and you begin by introducing the candidates. Jada Roman, Eric Scherzer, Holly Shaw, running as a slate under the slogan, "Every Student Thrives," Andrew Gideon, Sean Long, and June Rayner. I'd also like to introduce our timekeepers. Good evening, Ellen Bartoldis and Anita Vogel, who are also members of the local League. In the interest of time and addressing multiple topics, candidates have been broken up into two groups. I will begin by asking one question from A in random order. I will then move on to Group B for another question and repeat the process until we run out of questions or time. Candidates will begin with a two-minute opening statement in the order I've chosen, followed by prepared community questions. Candidates will have one minute to answer. Please pay attention to the timekeepers. Once you've begun speaking, the timekeepers will signal at 30 seconds and ready for stop. When you see stop, please briefly finish your sentence so we can move on. We will conclude with one-minute closing statements in reverse order and closing remarks and voter information. Audience, please silence any cell phones. Hold all applause until conclusion. Let's begin. Okay, opening statements. We'll begin with Group A, and first is Sean Long.
All right, good evening. Give me one second, I have some remarks. So to the League of Women Voters community, thank you for having us this evening. So my name is Sean Long. So I'm proud to be running for a full term for the Montclair Board of Education. I'm a graduate of Morehouse College. I'm in the Eagle Scout, and I'm a mama's boy. These are experiences that have instilled in me values of service and leadership that I care for me today. I've lived in Montclair for nearly a decade with my dynamic wife and three children. Professionally, I bring over 20 years of experience in business, specifically e-commerce, where I focus on operational efficiencies and data-driven decision-making. Currently, I serve as an executive at Target, leading a team to deliver exceptional digital experience for the Target app and website. Beyond my professional career, I'm committed to public service, including my current role in the Montclair Board of Education, where I serve on the Policy Committee, the Culture and Climate Committee, and the Personnel Committee. I'm also on the Board of Directors with the Montclair YMCA. The YMCA was my first job in high school as a school instructor in lifeguard. These roles have allowed me to advocate for an inclusive, safe, and financially responsible environment for students, families, and our community. I'm running for the board because I believe in the transformative power of education. Identifying a new superintendent while supporting the interim superintendent is a top priority as we move forward with implementing the district's strategic plan. I believe the fiscal responsibility, operational efficiencies, and accountability are crucial to making sustainable progress. With the community, teachers, administration together, I know we can build a stronger future for our students and our community. Thank you.
June Rayner.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and our sponsors. My name is June Rayner. I've been in Montclair for 19 years. I have three children who have graduated from the Montclair schools and one who currently attends the high school. 14 years ago, there was a call for parents to go to Board of Ed meetings to advocate for our parents who were losing their healthcare benefits. And I answered the call, and I went to my very first Board of Education meeting. And I stood up, and I spoke. And I went to the next one, and I went to the next one, and I've gone to most of the League since then. And I have spoken about a variety of issues because I care about a lot of things and I care about our children. I believe that education is the most important force in society for bringing about equity and improvements in our society. I have volunteered in countless different roles because I truly believe in community service. Thank you.
Holly Shaw.
Hi, everyone, my name is Holly Shaw. I'm also a parent of three children. I have a daughter who just graduated from Montclair High. I have a 10th grader, and I have an 8th grader. My older daughter went through Glenfield, and my two youngest went to Buzz. I grew up in California, actually, with a single mother with very limited means. And I grew up in a very, very similar district to Montclair. It was a very large public school with a lot of diversity and a lot of various backgrounds. My mother did not know how to advocate for me and my siblings. And when I began the journey in public school and had to learn to advocate for my own children, I realized what a burden it was, and not everybody was equipped to do it. And it led me to run for the BOE because I believe that all children should have an advocate. And children like me who are lost in the system should have someone who can work after them and know what it's like. I currently serve on the Board of Montclair Little League. I coach baseball. And my son actually thinks it's awesome. And I'm actively organizing events, leading fundraising efforts. I'm a dedicated member of Skate Essex. I was very involved in our skate park here. And I've always volunteered my time in the PTA. I've been very hands-on organizing events, fundraising, and working closely with teachers and administration. As a parent in the Montclair school system, I've experienced the challenges and opportunities within our school. And I've navigated the elementary, the middle, and the high schools, which gives me a really good perspective on what's going on in our schools. In my day-to-day work, I'm a writer that specializes in wine and spirits. So I'm everybody's friend on the PTA. And prior to that, I worked in global marketing and communications with Lehman Brothers, Morgan Stanley, and Citibank.
Andrew Gideon.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Gideon. I've lived in town since before 1994. My two kids went to our schools with the youngest graduating a year ago. I've been on PTAs and school action teams from the beginning. For example, running the mailing list for issuing PTA to communicate with families, to mentoring with the high school robotics team. I'm still working with the PTA Council, which I've helped with tools to build an organizational memory and a public website for sharing of information. I've also been involved on the board side. I've been a regular at board meetings since about 2009. I served on a volunteer committee for the board, and I've spoken on and written about a few times both budgeting and achievement issues. I became involved, and I've stayed involved even after my kids are out because I believe in the power of education. I also believe in the importance of data, which, when combined with context and meaning, becomes information that can inform our actions and show us how to improve the education that we're providing. We're often asked about our top priority. Skipping past the obvious priority of finding the proper superintendent for the town, my top priority is advocating for more information, whether it's more comprehensive and timely reports to the board, more complete information shared with the public, better use of assessments, which our students are already taking, or working with parents to learn their priorities for the students. I hope to inculcate a culture of information-seeking, informed decision-making, and frequent review of the results of our choices. The most recent achievement report shows us, just like so many have before, that we need to do better. It's my goal that we do everything possible to make that happen, to provide the education needed and deserved by every one of our students. Thank you.
Jada Roman.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jada Roman. I am a parent of two children. One child who's already gone through the district, graduated from college last year, and is out of the house. And I have an 8th grader who's currently at Renaissance Middle. I've served on multiple PTAs as vice president, president. I'm currently a president of the PTA at Renaissance Middle. But most recently, my last few years, I have been the senior leader for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. This one I hold dear to me. I had to leave my career because Montclair's school district didn't know what to do with my child when he was about five and a half, six years old. And so I learned the hard way how to advocate for not only my son, but for countless other families within the district. The reason that I decided to run was a number of reasons. One was obvious because of the special education link. But other than that, it was I grew up around here. I'm from South Orange, Maplewood. My cousins all went to school near Montclair. I dated a boy in Montclair that didn't marry him. I'm still my husband, okay? But I absolutely love this community. And I invested in moving here about 19 years ago. And so with that, I decided that I was going to put forth all of my effort, all of my experience, and my heart into ensuring that every one of our children in this district and every single one of our community members had equal and equitable access to the district and its business dealings. I truly love this community. And as we talk a little bit more, you'll learn more about it. I like mine, too. Thank you.
Last but not least, Eric Scherzer.
Hi, I'm Eric Scherzer. I've been in town for 37 years. I have two kids who went through the school system and two grandkids and two grandnephews who are currently in Montclair schools. You've read more about me because I've been on the board for the last three and a half years. You've seen me at board meetings. I do my homework. I ask tough questions, even if they're unpopular. I look to bring people together. I encourage the board to be transparent and to improve its communication. And I have a record of accomplishment. First considered the bond referendum. Others supported the bond. I was the chair of the Facilities Committee who put all the pieces together. And it's not well-known, but in the final days, when we needed the State Department of Education approval to get the 40% reimbursement that the state was providing, I was the one who called on a careers' worth of political connections in the state legislature and with local politicians to get the approval we needed. Others talk about the usefulness of town hall meetings. I'm the one who's done it. The last town hall meetings that we've had, probably the only ones in the last five or six years, were the two that we organized around the bond presentation. And another area, a second area of accomplishment, is around labor management cooperation. After years of acrimony resulting in the board suing the teachers' union during COVID, I learned that there was a Rutgers-sponsored labor management consortium in the state, and I engineered our participation. Then I was on the management side of the negotiating committee, and we successfully concluded two rounds of negotiation. Because of the experience and my understanding, long-term understanding of Montclair, I know what's needed in a superintendent. And I understand how to involve the community and how the board should be accountable and transparent. And with allies like Jada Roman and Holly Shaw on the board, we'll be able to accomplish it.
Okay, on to question one, which will be Group A. Can the district do more to address...
Can you move your microphone closer to you?
Better. Can the district do more to address bullying? This is Group A, and the first to answer will be Holly.
Yeah, so I think a lot of probably the issues that arise in terms of bullying are probably not able to be talked about, you know, covered under privacy. So I don't think we hear the board talk much about it other than the specific cases or the amount of kids that it concerns. I mean, I think in general, we've been asked while we're running from different groups, how we can address sort of hate crimes and which follows under bullying. I think you can, there's two areas of bullying, right? You have cellphone usage that, you know, kids are video-recorded or bullied via cellphone, sometimes at school and sometimes out of school. And then you have certain kids that are targeted, hate crimes, religious crimes. And I think there's a lot more to be done. And I think the biggest thing to be done is once we educate and communicate to parents and children, I think it starts the platform for less bullying.
June, same question.
In the district, we have something that's called harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. This is a process that is defined by the state. It defines a very rigorous...
June, bring the microphone closer. Those of us back here are not hearing anybody very well. Folks, move the microphones around.
Sir, sir, thank you.
This defines a very rigorous process that the district has to go through whenever something is recorded. Can the district encourage more reporting? Absolutely. Can the district have, as part of their curriculum, addressing the cultures in the school? Absolutely. Should that be done? Yes.
Thank you. Sean, same question.
Can you hear me in the back? So I think, you know, June articulated some things very nicely. I'd also add to that, so the district has invested in restorative justice. And I think as the district wants to deepen its practice in restorative justice and how it brings our students, our teachers, our communities together, that'll be a really important tool and mechanism to do some of that work. So I think there is more that can be done. And I think restorative justice is one of the tools that we have in the district's tool belt to do some of that work. Thank you.
Okay, on to Group B. Your first question will be, "What do you think the Montclair School District needs to do regarding sustainability?" First question or answer is Eric.
Okay, thank you. Sustainability, this is an important question for us because our budget, as you all know, is capped. Oh, sustainability, I'm sorry. I was thinking economics, sustainability. I think the question refers to global issues.
Environmental.
Environmental, okay. Thank you. Well, this has been a big issue, particularly with the turf field at Woodman. I've been on the forefront of that issue. And I think that what we have to do on that is to show and invest in upkeep of the brand-new sod, natural grass field that we put in Hillside. If we can maintain that field and maintain it well, then we know that we can continue to invest in grass and we can, over time, reduce our exposure to turf. On the other hand, there is a sustainability score that all our schools have been involved in, but we haven't moved up the scale. I've been investigating this lately, and I see that one of the handicaps to it is that our teachers need assistance. There are people in our community, and this, you'll hear, is a constant refrain from me. We can use people in the community to help our teachers move our schools forward on sustainability.
Thank you. Jada?
Just let me, hoping everybody can hear me. So yes, there's a few things that we can do in terms of sustainability. And I think one is we actually have to change our mentality here in the district and decide if we're going to be serious about it and ensure that we have the right people in place to help, you know, maintain whatever our goal is going to be in terms of sustainability. We have multiple teachers, multiple staff members in buildings today that are doing projects in silos. And so as a district, we have to say to ourselves, listen, if we're going to do this, do we have the right folks in place? How do we then align each one of our school buildings as well as the staff in the buildings together so that we can, in fact, put together a plan that's going to work and allow for us to grow in our sustainability environment and in the district overall?
Andrew.
About a month ago, there was a report given to the Board of Ed on a project that started, I believe, in 2016, the Ezra. And it talked about how certain efforts have been underway in the district. And it was presented in a way that I thought was very appealing. It measured the improvements that we've made in sustainability in terms of dollars, in terms of fuel savings, and also in terms of the tree equivalent, how many trees that have been planted. And I think that's a good thing. The district has been serious about this for a while. However, when the referendum was, when the projects for the referendum were listed, there were some choices that were made that went more for savings than for ecological sustainability. And those might have been the right choices because perhaps the referendum would not have been approved if the price had been higher. But I think the district had the opportunity to be more open.
Back to Group A. Can the district do more to maintain a positive learning environment that is safe, inclusive, and fosters a sense of belonging? First is June.
So can the district do more to foster an environment that is safe, inclusive, and fosters a love of learning? Is that the question?
Sense of belonging.
Sorry, sense of belonging. Sorry, thanks, I repeated it. I think the district can always do more and always do better. To foster safety, that is something that both our school action teams look at on a regular basis. And they meet with building leaders as well as police and community members to make sure our buildings are safe. The biggest thing we're doing right now to make our buildings more safe is investing the money from the referendum. Our buildings were very seriously unsafe. We had the high school staircase collapse. We had pieces of water falling off of roofs. This referendum money should fix those things.
So safety is really important for our kids. And I think it's one of the most important things that we, as a community, can make sure we're doing is keeping our children safe. So as a board member, we do that through policies and make sure that the policies are implemented and reflected with consistency and applied thoughtfully across all the students. So safety is really important. One of the things that's top of mind for me is the psychological safety of our students. As we think about mental health in this country and in this community, that's one of the places when I think we can continue to do more and make sure we have the resources to support our students, our staff, our community in that way. So, thank you.
So I think this is a great question in terms of fostering an environment where kids feel safe but also want to learn. And I believe that we have incredible teachers in our district, and they want to grow our kids into these great humans. And safety is different for elementary, for middle, and for high school. You know, when my daughter was at the high school, she just wanted a lock on the bathroom, which actually isn't covered under the bond. So the bathrooms will not be touched at the high school. So I think morale is really important, and we have a very low teacher morale right now. But if we can involve our teachers, collaborate with our parents, get our students involved, we can have an education that's impactful, that's exciting, that's creative, and involves everyone. And when you do that, you create a morale that children want to learn. They want to come to school. And I mean, Bluefield has a dog that's coming for mental health. You know, there's a lot of mental health resources that are out there that we don't use that I'd love to see as a part of it.
Back to Group B. The question is, "Montclair Public Schools are currently under scrutiny by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights for seclusion and restraint practices towards students of color and/or disability. Some research shows these practices can cause long-lasting trauma and escalate negative behaviors. Are you in support of the use of seclusion and restraint in our district? Why or why not?" First will be Jada.
So this one hits home for me because my child was a subject of one of those actual complaints. And as a parent who is firmly educated on the programming, I think the district has done a poor job in supporting the students, the families, and the educators who are implementing the program. The program itself is an extremely successful program. Every one of the students in my child's class is now a general education student with supports. However, I don't want to take away the fact that it has been used inappropriately in other areas. In Montclair, we do not have a documented case. And to continue to allow parents such as myself having to be subjected to scrutiny and everything else when all we have to do is follow the law, which every single one of our educators has done, is absolutely ridiculous to me. of our educators has done, is absolutely ridiculous to me. So yes, I am in support of a program that has 12 steps that are utilized before the use of seclusion for the safety of a child or other children in the classroom.
Andrew?
This is not a subject about which I know too much, however, it has been discussed at Board of Ed meetings multiple times. And as Jada said, a number of parents have spoken about the success of the program. However, people have also spoken about policies that have not been followed. The Board of Ed is responsible for policies. If the policies are flawed, those need to be improved. However, if policies are not being followed, that's a different matter and that's something for which the Board needs to hold the superintendent accountable so the superintendent holds the various members of the staff accountable. That is something that is extremely important to me on any issue, not just this one.
Eric?
Yes, this is a very important issue and it's one of the reasons I'm running with Jada because she is more of an expert in it than I am. But I have talked to a number of parents whose children have been in this program. I've seen them advance and become more into the general education program as Jada testified. Seclusion and restraint can only be done in a very limited manner and it has to be done correctly. I think we're doing that. And one piece of evidence that gives me comfort is that just last year, the educator of the year at Bullock Elementary School where my grandkids go was the teacher in charge of this classroom. So I think he's well-recognized as an excellent educator. And having this program helps parents keep kids in the community. And that's really important for both the parents and their children.
Okay. Next question for Group A. In mid-October, the new superintendent of the East Orange Schools announced the major budget cuts because of a significant unforeseen shortfall. What do you understand to be your role in fiscal oversight beyond adopting a budget? And first is Sean.
I won't speak on that, about the orange situation. I don't know anything about that to add anything there, but our board, look, budgets are important. I guess the board will have to pass the budget. We need to make sure we're supporting and maintaining the staff of the most important programs and the educational offerings that are most important. We have to keep our students at the center of all decisions.
Ollie?
Yeah, I mean, listen, our budget is really tight. It's not news to anyone. And I think as a board, we need to look at, I mean, I'm all for an audit. I think that an audit is necessary to look at where we're spending money. We spend a lot of money on litigation. We spend a lot of money on consultants that are probably unnecessary. We have someone sitting next to the board members that's a lawyer that we are paying as taxpayers to sit there. That doesn't sound like fiscal responsibility. I think a lot of people want some, you know, board members who are watching the bond, how we're spending the money, and they want responsibility for it. This is our money and it should be invested. I think we need to be creative. There are grants. We used to have a full-time grant writer. We need to bolster our budget. We are not getting money out of the air. So if we want to be more diverse, have more creativity in how we're spending money, reading the bathrooms at Glenfield and in the high school because they are not in the bond, we need to get creative. We need to go after bonds and we need to look at energy-efficient upgrades and retention in our teachers.
June?
Part of the reason that East Orange lost their state and federal money was because of gentrification and the decrease in number of students on free and reduced meals.
We need to repeat it, I'm sorry. Could you speak up?
We can't hear you.
Do you need to hear the question again?
Yes.
In mid-October, the new superintendent of the East Orange Schools announced major budget cuts because of a significant unforeseen shortfall. What do you understand to be your role in fiscal oversight beyond adopting a budget?
Part of the shortfall was due to East Orange's decrease in, decrease, is that better?
Yeah.
In the number of students on a free and reduced meal program. This is something that has been an issue in Montclair over the years as well, and it was something that I was part of a group that watched carefully. Is that better?
Yes.
I also helped sign families up and I encouraged the board to make those application forms part of the mandatory forms that every parent has to fill out at the beginning of the year. Being fiscally responsible is really important. I don't believe that we need to pay an outside auditor. When the library was falsely accused of having financial problems in their $4 million budget, did they spend too much money to find out if it was mine?
Back to Group B. Your question is, if you had to vote on an artificial turf bid today, with all the emerging signs on this project, what would your criteria be for your vote? First would be Andrew.
Early in the referendum, the board decided to do two different fields. It decided to do Hillside and it decided to do Woodman Field. For reasons that I don't know, Woodman was done with turf and Hillside was done with grass. This raises the question, what decision criteria were used for the choice? And I don't know the answer. I would like to learn the answer. That would inform my decision in that regard as well as any additional science that's happening. We don't have a form, a field coming up in the near future, so that's not an immediate concern. However, we do have an opportunity to learn from these two fields and I think the board should be paying attention to what's happening in terms of costs and maintainability with the two fields, utilization of the two fields, to learn exactly what the benefits and costs are to the district for these two different kinds of fields.
Eric?
As Andrew said, this is not a decision we're going to have to make. But I am going to answer the question in this way. What was the most difficult part of the whole Woodman Field controversy is the negativity and the, just the divisiveness on both sides. And I would be an advocate for bringing in experts from, on both sides. Tell us how to maintain grass fields. Tell us the hazards of turf. Let's look at our experience. And I'm sure that if we do that, we will come up with the appropriate solution. That is the way we ought to be operating in Montclair and it didn't happen in this case and I'm sorry that it didn't. If there was more dialogue and more use of expert opinions and, not opinions, experts' facts, we would have had less acrimony.
Jada?
I'm going to echo what both Andrew and Eric said, is that criteria for me would be the experts in both in the field. So we're looking at those folks who are in the field of working on field, you know, field turfs and as well as artificial turf. I also would ask to have folks who are in the athletic field, so athletic directors and so forth, so that we can make a more informed decision. I today would not know which one would be the better of the two. However, after sitting down with my colleagues and sitting down and looking at the science, we can then decide what works best and we have to look at it from now and look long-range as well.
Okay. Next question is for Group A. How do you measure the effectiveness of Montclair's magnet school system? With changing demographics in Montclair's population, what do you think needs to be done to preserve and enhance it? Ollie?
Well, I'm a big proponent of the magnet school system. I think for my kids, you know, individually, can you hear me? It worked really well. I have an older daughter who is really into the arts. We were at Watchum and she decided to go to Glenfield and, you know, loved it there. And I have, you know, my third child, he's really into STEM and he's at BUSS. So I think we should preserve our magnet school system and the reason, you know, I think it's important to educate the reason around why we have the magnet school system, which is really important. I think the one thing if we're asking about changing, I think the placement for kindergarten is a little skewed at the moment and definitely needs to be looked at how we are placing kids and maybe we could do something about that. And I think it will actually help the diversity within our magnet school systems.
June?
Our magnet schools were put in place specifically to ensure racial diversity within our schools. We used to have a placement system that took into account racial characteristics. There was a Supreme Court case years ago that made the district move away from that for fear of lawsuits, which I think was actually a very realistic fear. The district then moved into a placement system that considered catchments and where you lived in town as a replacement for race. In the beginning, that was actually fairly successful for ensuring diversity, but that has been becoming less and less so. Now, I know it's very unpopular to use the word consultants, but I do think we need to find a better way to ensure racial diversity but also keep away from lawsuits.
Thank you. I think we can keep improving. I, you know, as June stated, the magnets were put in place at a particular point in our history in solving a very specific issue at that time. I think it is important to look at the data and understand where we are as it relates to how we're solving that. Many folks I hear and speak to and have talked to, even over the last couple of months I've talked to, coming to this community because of the diversity. Our children in the schools, that is one of the beautiful things that I think, or I know they benefit from, the education from being around diverse communities. So I think there's an opportunity to understand where we are. Is it still solving what it needs to solve? And iterating, I think there's an opportunity there to continue to improve. So I think they're very important, but I think they can be improved. Thank you.
Back to Group B. What is your position on cell phone use, screening time, and the role of technology in curriculum delivery, including one-to-one Chromebooks at the elementary and middle school level? Eric?
Wow, these are great questions. Cell phone use, I think we're moving, we should have a policy that we don't have in place right now. We should be clear that in the middle school and the high school, where at least that often a way, cell phones shouldn't be used by students in the classroom. In elementary schools, I don't think there should be cell phones. But that, the other issue you raise is one I think that we've got to spend more time on. I am concerned about how much time our kids, my grandkids, spend in front of computers. I am concerned about that and I think that we need to do a much better job of investigating exactly what is happening in each of the classrooms and what the correct policy is.
Jada?
So, two things, I think. One, we definitely do need to put policy around the cell phone usage in the building and it has to be based on rate levels, so elementary, middle, and high school. I think the high school teachers did a phenomenal job of creating a policy on their own. However, that policy puts the onus on them and not back to the district. And that is our responsibility, not theirs. So I think there's an opportunity for us to take what is already in effect and really improve on it and allow them to do their job, which is to teach and nurture our children. The one-to-one Chromebook, I have a hard time with this because I know that the best of intentions were done to ensure that our children had technology, especially during a time in which we were all at home. However, I think we did a very poor job of putting in place exactly how it was going to be managed, what the responsibility of the parent, the student, the teacher, the principal, up the chain. And that is something that we need to investigate and determine as well as looking at whether or not the assessments that we're using want to make the best sense.
Andrew?
I'll start with the idea that technological literacy is key to it and we have to provide that to our students. That said, we have existing policy. It may not be the right policy, but we have policies in place. If the policies are not enforced, then changing the policies doesn't necessarily fix anything. We have to make sure that whatever policies are going to be put into place or using the existing policies, they have to be enforced. If we do tweak the policies, they have to take into account student differences. I've heard some parents talking about measures where if your phone is seen by a teacher, a parent has to come in and pick it up. That may sound fine for the families where people aren't, are available to do that. Not all families are available during school hours to come in and pick up a phone. So we have to take into account student differences when we're talking about any policy updates.
Okay. Back to Group A. In your opinion, what is the most pressing challenge that the school district faces? June?
As board members, the most pressing challenge would be to hire an excellent new superintendent. It's one of the board's biggest responsibilities. It's also the one that will be the most urgent. Hiring Dr. Pons was an excellent decision. Continuing his contract was something that I advocated for and applauded. Now that he has unfortunately passed, we need to find another superintendent. One who has good policy ideas, good program ideas, who's able to reach out to the community, and one who has an authentic sense of urgency about educating our students.
Thank you. Sean?
So, agree the superintendent, that's number one. You've got to identify a new superintendent. I'd like to introduce another opportunity for our district. And it's one that the most recent achievement report was published and shared at the last board meeting. Achievement for our students is what our responsibility is. That's what we're here to do. And we have parts of this community that we are, we're not meeting, we're not meeting that. And unfortunately, that's some long history there and some parts of this community, we have too long of a track record of not delivering that promise for those students to be their full potential and to thrive. So I would just advocate for the urgency around how this community focuses on and supports and does the work to solve and make progress in a meaningful way for the achievement gap for the students that are not being delivered on that promise. Thank you.
Ollie?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm committed to fostering a school environment where every student, every parent, every teacher feels heard, valued, and empowered. And I think creating that district is very important that we pick, choose the next superintendent. And I believe that the new superintendent should be qualified. We should, as a board, set clear benchmarks, clear goals, incentives for that person to do their job well, but also to choose a staff that also does their job and well. The other, you know, thing that Sean pointed is absolutely true, our achievement gap. We had an achievement gap panel in 2015 that came out with, you know, an 85-page report. We just had a five-year strategic plan that is probably, has less steps in it than the one, you know, 10 years ago. We have to do something about our achievement gap. We have to start, stop talking about it and actually put plans in place. I think our universal prepay was like a really good first step, but there are definitely actionable items that can be taken.
Group B. Montclair is looking to hire a permanent superintendent. What stakeholders should be involved in evaluating candidates and who and how would you include those stakeholders in the process? Jada?
I think every single one of us in this community are stakeholders when it comes to our superintendent. The superintendent works at the behest of the community. And so I feel like each one of us has an opportunity and a right to have a seat at the table. How we develop your, you know, we receive your responses and so forth is upon us, but I believe that obviously our teacher union, our principal union, our principals, our teachers in the building, you know, all of you sitting here have the right to help us choose who the next human is going to be as our superintendent. And ensuring that all of our community partners who've been here supporting us, the library, MFEE, you know, our community activists, everyone deserves to have that right. So, you know, for me, it's a no-brainer. We all have a stake in this.
Andrew?
This is, the question you asked earlier, this is the most important thing that this board is going to face. As Jada said, everyone in the community needs to be involved to a certain degree, whether it's in developing the criteria by which the candidates will be selected and evaluated or ultimately making that final choice between the final set of candidates that pass through whatever filtering we have. It has to be done in a very clear and transparent manner. It has to involve all the different stakeholders, whether they're actually inside the school system or outside the school system, the partners, whether we're talking about MFEE and so on, people who have gone through the schools already. This is a community-wide effort. This person has to be responsible for all of our students and it will take the entire community to choose the proper person.
Eric?
Look, Jada and Andrew have given some suggestions of who to include and I agree with that. We've hired the New Jersey School Boards Association to come up with this process. They're going to do it over the next couple of months and we'll be involving people in the community. But let me be specific about what I'm looking for. I'm looking for someone who has worked in and understood I'm looking for someone who has worked in and understands a diverse community, an educator who is a consensus builder, a good manager who knows how to bring people together, someone with a proven track record of closing the achievement gap, an individual who recognizes the many diverse talents of this community and knows how to utilize those talents to improve our schools, and finally, an excellent and proactive communicator. That's a tall order. We, we will, maybe that person doesn't exist, but we will attempt to come with your help as close as possible to that ideal.
Back to Group A. New standardized test scores show that black students in Montclair remain consistently behind their peers. At the September meeting, a BOE committee report stated that historically and presently, a large percentage of students being suspended are black. If elected, how would you work to address these longstanding equity issues in the district? Start with Sean.
So for, for this question, I'll pull it apart. So I think there was a piece of the academics that was questioned.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then the suspensions. I'll address those separately. So in the academics, so this is one where, again, it does require a great amount of urgency to do this. So I'd say there's opportunity with the high school to intervene. So we've got students that have a short period of time left. So that report that was referenced, those were our 11 graders that have limited time left in this district. We have to come up with a strategy to make sure we're intervening and supporting those as they get ready to go out into the world and make sure that we're delivering on that promise. We also need to make sure we're starting early. So the universal prepay, that's important. The testing and the identification in the elementary school, the second and third grade, really, really important as well. I'm also a advocate of dual-degree and CTE programs, making sure we have other options and outcomes for those students in high school that are saying they want to be prepared for careers after high school that are separate from just the college track. On the suspension piece, there has been a moratorium on suspensions. That'll be in that.
Your time is up. You started a new sentence.
Yeah, no worries. I'll keep going with him. I mean, I think we have to be really honest as a, as Montclair to realize that our kids are not starting on the same playing field. They are not equal, and our kids learn differently. When we don't offer consistent communication and services across our schools, we're doing our kids a disservice before they step in the building. So, communication has to start earlier. We need more diversity in our AP programs. That kind of communication has to start in elementary school. When my first daughter was going through school, when I was in school, my mother was not educated, we did not know, you have to take certain classes to get to step B. We need to communicate that to parents, and we need to communicate it to parents, students. I think the data, you know, was really eye-opening, that 36% of African-American juniors had, were ready for math. We have a math problem. We've known we've had a math problem for a long time, and we have not held the superintendent or the staff accountable for that.
June.
Regarding the achievement gap, it's a huge problem in this school, and we need to do something drastic and with urgency. As Sean mentioned, especially with the juniors, we only have another year and a half with them left in our schools. We have way too many students over many years who have graduated from Montclair schools who cannot read or do math. We are not preparing them for life, and we need to address that head-on. As far as the suspension data, that is also very important and very much linked to this situation. At the moment, the board, when they received this report, has put a moratorium on suspensions, and I think that is a good first step. But something needs to be done to train our staff and our principals who are making these decisions to suspend these students.
Okay, back to Group B. If you could do one thing to improve the quality of Montclair Board of Education meetings for parents and stakeholders, what would that be? Just one. Clearly a good question. Andrew.
Well, the problem is that Montclair Board of Ed meetings need to be shorter, so they're more accessible to the public. And they need to be more, they need to provide more information to the public, they need to have more interaction with the public. Those obviously don't coincide. One makes the meeting shorter, one makes the meeting longer. There need to be mechanisms put into place that allow communication with the community in both directions, that allows the board meetings to concentrate on the actual work of the board, so that the public still feels heard and still has the opportunity to have their questions and issues addressed by the board. If we can do that, we reduce the amount of pressure on things that have to happen in board meetings, and those, that allows board meetings to be more accessible while also keeping the public closely involved.
Eric.
There's a couple of things we can do. We can respond to questions that we receive in advance. We can respond to questions that come up at previous board meetings. Either the superintendent or the board president can do that in the start of meetings, so people don't feel like they're speaking into a black hole. We can present reports. We, as the board, don't get the reports that are being presented at that meeting very far in advance. We don't release them to the public in advance. So we ought to be doing that so we can get more intelligent responses on part of the board members and better participation in terms of people understanding what we're doing. We can also consider opening up the committee structure somewhat to involve people in the community. And we can do a much better job of involving our students. The student representative roles should be expanded, so we really hear back from students about what's going on in schools.
Jada.
Exactly what you said. We've actually had this question, Holly, Eric, and I multiple times, and so we've already sort of had our answer, and that's exactly what it is. The structure doesn't work the way it is today. I'd also like to see us have our board president allow for the attorney to sit in the audience and not up at the table with the rest of them. I think it shows just a little bit of, it's a little bit of fear that goes in, especially if you're standing up there to speak, but everything he said, well, you have to do it.
Perfect timing. Next question, back to Group A. During the development of the five-year strategic plan, many district families said pushing back school start times is a priority. What is your position on school start times, or even in favor of later start times for middle and high school students? And start with, um, Group A, I'm sorry, Holly.
I mean, I think this is a great question. I know that they actually asked the students at the high school, my daughter was there, and she was very much for a later start time. I know it is not ideal for everyone, so I'd be very interested in having a town hall and getting people together and understanding the pros and cons of it. I know, as a parent of three kids who've had kids at three different schools multiple times, it is hard to get kids out of bed, get fed, get their lunches together, and get them to school on time. So I think there is, as a parent, seeing my high schooler stay up late, especially her junior and senior year, she was up till 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, especially when you're doing multiple AP classes, studying, and it's hard to get up in the morning, and it does affect their, their mental capacity. But I do know that there's people who've raised concerns, maybe teachers who are dropping their kids off in another district and coming here, so I think it's definitely worth investigating.
June.
Later start times for middle school kids, the data is there. It's a good idea. We should be doing it. We should be doing it sooner rather than later. I believe this is a contract issue that needs to be addressed immediately. Starting later for the high school is a little bit more complicated, especially for kids who either work after school or are involved in sports and activities. And I think we need to make sure we have buy-in from all of the high school of different communities. We also need to make sure the kids have time to study, and we, but we also, we need them to be alert and ready for school. So I think it's a little bit tougher at the high school level.
Sure. Start with the data. So you start with the data, and then you start to solve your problem from there. So I believe, you know, to June's point, you have some pretty clear data around what's right for the students, so starting with the data forward for the students and the working is stopped there. I think the things you start to solve around are how you bring the stakeholders together and bringing everybody along to make sure that it works and everybody feels good about it. But the decision has to be centered around what's right for the students. Thank you.
Back to Group B. If elected, would you support any efforts toward turning one or more of our public schools into a charter school? Eric.
No.
No.
Andrew.
No.
Okay. Very much. Back to Eddie. Are you aware of a school board policy regarding board members' use of social media? What do you consider appropriate conduct for a member of the Board of Education when using social media or speaking in online forums? Will you change how you approach or participate in social media if you are elected? June.
I saw through many, many board meetings over the last 14 years and watched board members on their phones. I've watched board members leave the room and have ex parte conversations during the board meeting. That is a problem as far as sunshine laws go. It's supposed to be an open and public meeting. I've even seen board members watch ballgames. That's a problem. As a board member, I would be definitely paying attention to what's going on in the meeting. Now, as a member of the public, you can say certain things. As a board member, there's a lot you cannot say. I respect the rules, and I would always respect the rules as a board member.
Sean.
Yeah, I, I think as a, a public figure, elected official, you have a different standard. I don't think you should, you know, and the board, the board president speaks on behalf of the board, that's the structure. I don't think individual board members should be commenting on things that are related to board, board business on social media, so, no, I do not think so. I would also say, for me, I strongly believe you got to take social media, sometimes I would just advocate for, in this community, finding ways to take the temperature down a little bit and bring, bring the facts, facts up. And I think you have a better chance for a stronger outcome when you're able to do that. And right now, unfortunately, on social media, I don't think you have a good chance for that, because there's, the facts are low and the temperatures or emotions are high, not a great enough source for a good outcome. Thank you.
Holly. I mean, I think we should all operate with integrity. That has always been my motto to my kids, that we are, you represent my family when you are here, and we should operate in kindness and empathy and integrity, and I think that, you know, should follow. I mean, I, for social media, there's a lot of crowdsourcing that happens in this town. I do moderate the Buzz, you know, Facebook page for the, you know, for the PTA. I think that there's great resources on social media, and I'm not opposed to board members commenting or saying, hey, if you need help, go here. We do not have a work term, people do not know where to go when they need help, and I think it's absolutely important that we point people in the right direction. I think, I would love to have a newsletter as a board member. Hey, here's our issues. Nothing that's covered under privacy, but I am absolutely for communication. I think a lack of communication causes diversiveness. I mean, social media is one thing, obviously that's a whole nother realm, but communication, yes, newsletter, great.
Okay, back to Group B. Sometimes during board meetings, people raise valid and major concerns, then the district moves forward as planned, no thoughtful feedback on or discussion of why. How would you improve engagement and transparency? Jada.
So this goes back to, I think, an earlier point that Eric and I both answered, when it comes to about being transparent and using communication and the structure. So if we had those questions ahead of time, or if we had given the community the feedback from the agenda in which we were going to discuss, some of those same things that people are feeling out there, standing up there asking questions, and then things happen, and then there's nothing that comes out behind it, would actually change a bit, and you could actually understand why we're making the, the decision that's being made. But again, it goes back to being clear, being honest, and being transparent without business dealings.
Andrew.
As Jada said, I think a big part of this is the sharing of information as early as possible. It's not just the communication between the board and the, and the community, though. The strategic plan that was approved, I, I'm in favor of the plan, but I was very distressed at that process of approval, because the board was actually given the strategic plan, the public was made aware of the details of the strategic plan, and a meeting when it had to be approved. Had it not been approved, then they would have, that would have caused a cascade of delays that was made very clear would be problematic. I think information needs to be put out there, whether it's given to the board, given to the public, moving in any of these directions with enough time that there can be questions asked and answered, that there can be discussion, so that ultimately, when the choices are made by the board, the public is aware of the basis of those choices, and the board is aware of the various inputs that the public may have.
Eric.
Andrew, I'm really glad you said that, and I really appreciated your comments that night, because I voted against the strategic plan, and I voted against it for the exact reasons that you cited. We were not given enough time to review it. It didn't have SMART goals, it was not clear who was responsible for what, it was very vague. And that's not what we need for a long-term strategic plan. As a board member, I could not figure out what the goals were even for the first year, much less for five. I know it's a living document, but you got to start somewhere, and you have to be clear about defining responsibilities and defining goals that are measurable. And when that wasn't done, I voiced my opinion and voted against it. Unfortunately, I was not in the majority.
Okay, back to Group A. How would you assess current ESL instruction in the district? How will you work to address the needs of multilingual students? Starting with Sean.
Sheesh, okay. No, no, not, not. So we have a growing need in this community for multilingual learners, so that's a population in Montclair, again, as we go back to the diversity of this community. That's a part of this community that's grown over the last five years. So there is a new director that has started to implement some programming that, that's in place now, the presentation was given to, to board meetings ago. So that's a place where we can do, we can do better. I, I don't have the details, and I'd have to come back with more information on that, but I'd say that is a important part of the district and the community that's growing, that we need to make sure we're serving that population.
Holly.
Yeah, I think this is a really great question, and I know I learned a lot. My daughter volunteered for the Navidores, and I learned a lot, you know, through her involvement. You know, we have a big population, and the board, this, the lady that you mentioned, you know, reported at the board, I think it's somewhere like 68% Spanish. Portuguese comes in second, and French comes in third. And we have a real need for staff for our ESL students, and we don't have the staff, you know, the appropriate staff. I know there's some parents at Northeast who brought up the fact that there is an integrated classroom with a part-time Spanish, you know, translator, and it's taking class twice as long. There's not a real policy or plan in place for it, and it seems a bit to be taken away from instruction for all students. So I think there just needs to be better oversight and staffing.
June.
I was also disappointed at the data that was presented several meetings ago about ESL students, and I actually followed up. The problem was not with the person presenting the data, but that we couldn't get growth data because it hadn't been done before. Growth data is really important. She had presented raw data. I've actually worked with families for several years that have I've actually worked with families for several years that have come here and stayed at Mother Teresa House from different families. And we have some great programs in our schools, but we are having a really hard time keeping up with the increasing, uh, pace of international students coming here and their needs. So unfortunately, that's gonna be something that needs to get put into the budget. And whenever you put something into the budget, you have to take something else out of the budget. So tough decisions are gonna be, have to be made. But the board, that's their second most responsibility and that's important, the budget.
Group B. If you are elected and served, when you look back at the end of your term, what does success look like? Andrew?
Improved student outcomes, a smoothly operating district, and a board that is functioning very efficiently. Information moving back and forth between board, the administration, staff, and the public in, in both directions. Everybody is informed about what is true and why decisions are being made and how those decisions are going to be evaluated in the future to make sure that everything is working the way we think they work. We'll see. We need to see, uh, a significant improvement in our underserved population of students. The, the, this, the achievement reports, the, the recent one, the only good thing about it is that it's not a surprise. We, we expect it. We should know that this sort of thing is coming. We have to do better. And it's my hope that after three years on the board, I will have helped bring about some significant improvement to what we're doing with our students.
Eric?
Success for me will be, uh, clear data on showing that we've moved the needle dramatically on the opportunity and achievement gap. We should be very close to finishing up on all of the bond projects and our school buildings will be something that we can be more proud of and will show them that we can do it in a fiscally responsible way. And we should build on the cooperation that we've started with, in, in, in the programs between the teachers and the district administration, so that we're all operating together in a spirit of unity and we can take down, we will see that the level of animosity and just nastiness at our school board meetings will, will, will decrease because we'll be a smooth functioning machine. And that's probably as, equally as, uh, utopian as my idea of what the kind of superintendent we're looking for.
Jada? So a couple of things. One is a culture shift, that we are respectful of everyone, their opinions, their thoughts, and their ideas. A qualified superintendent that we actually retain with measurable goals. And again, as Eric said, moving the needle on the achievement gap, but also ensuring that we are providing our staff with the tools and resources that they need to be successful in their career. And then also making sure that our communication, as well as the overall process of inclusion, and not just from a special education, but from race, gender, socioeconomic, that we actually start doing the work that we say that we're doing and actually become the Montclair, the diverse Montclair we say that we are.
Back to Group B. What specific actions would you recommend to make the district budget process more transparent? June? Oh, I'm sorry. Holly?
Okay. I, well, I, I think we need to just be transparent about the budget. You know, I went deep diving, you know, I was in finance, so I like numbers. And I went deep diving into the budget. You know, we kind of have a user-friendly budget. That's really not helpful. It is hard to find light items on what we are actually spending money on. I think our business administrator just needs to be far more open and transparent about what's going on. I think we need a financial audit. I think there's a lot of things, including probably interest on this bond. You know, where is that money? How much is that money? I think that, um, there's ways to look at our budget to cut. Litigation, consultants, involving people in our town to step into those type of consulting roles. There's a lot of intelligent, incredibly intelligent people here who could, um, offer help and services that we don't have to pay for.
June?
I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, Holly. I don't think we need to pay an outside auditor. I started talking about this before, but when there was a witch hunt against the library, they had a $4 million budget. The auditor cost the town, I think, $30,000 or $35,000. Our budget is upward of $100 million. That audit is gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And whenever I think about adding that kind of money into our budget, I think about what we're gonna have to subtract. And that's gonna be teachers out of our classroom and I think that's problematic. Our group has actually discussed both the budget and the audit and a lot of the answers are in the footnotes. That's one of the reasons why I really enjoy being on this campaign and on this slate with Sean and Andrew. It's something we've really looked at seriously. Thank you.
So I'd advocate for, um, how we're communicating, uh, the budget. And I think that there's cadence and frequency in which we're, we're communicating. So I think we can do a better job of, uh, of bringing folks along on where we are. So, um, other boards I sit on, um, there, there is a different cadence in how budgeting is communicated and shared out. So I'd say there's an opportunity as we think about sharing and how we bring folks along. Right now, when you look at the budget, it is, it's dense. There's a lot of lines. It's really hard to, to follow for anybody that has not been trained on how to read this particular budget. I've got a very analytical and numbers background. This budget is hard to read. So there's a, a lot of information in there. I will say right now, it's out there. But making sure that we have folks that are able to bring the community along and bring transparency would be really helpful.
Okay, B. Do you think the town should share pilot revenue with the school district? If yes, how would you work with the town to make it happen? If no, why not? Eric?
I hope everyone understands what pilot revenue is. It's payment in lieu of taxes. And I think that we have to look at this question very carefully. When residential buildings are opened up, are new residential buildings and they don't pay taxes, we're educating their students and, and the students that live there and we, uh, and we have to pay for it. So that's the argument for sharing the resources. Resources, on the other hand, are finite. So, uh, not taking that money from the town means, uh, certain things for the town. We need to have a full and clear discussion of this so we can make the right decision. Obviously, the schools need the money. I know much more about the school's budget than I do about the town's budget and I suppose that they would argue that they need it as well. However, educating our students is really, uh, should be our first priority as a community.
Jada? I sit in the middle on this one as well because there is, to Eric's point, there's a lot of information on both sides that need to be discussed. It needs to be discussed openly. And so when you're looking at pulling money from one thing to another, both sides need to have an open discussion about what does that look like. So for me personally, I would not today, without having a better understanding of what our township budget looks like, to say yes or no on the matter.
Andrew?
The town has had the opportunity to, the town has the opportunity to exercise multiple revenue sources, not just property taxes. The school district doesn't have that option. The town has not been operating for the past decade or more under the, the type of fiscal constraint that the school district has. I would be shocked if, looking at the budget, there weren't ways to move that money in such a way that it benefits the school district more, uh, more than it hurts the town's budget. So unless there's some new and exciting piece of information that changes my mind, yes, I'm in favor of the pilot money going to the school district.
Back to A. Knowing what we know now, if we face another COVID-like health emergency, would you vote to continue live instruction? June?
Do you mean in-person instruction?
I think that's what I thought.
Okay.
Write the questions, folks.
Um, Montclair was one of the last districts in Jersey to return to in-person learning. That was devastating for our students. It was also devastating for our families where people were working at home. There were several things that, um, I actually advocated for at the time. One was that teachers get priority on vaccinations. Another one was for the referendum, so that we can actually put in the HVAC systems that would make our schools safer for everyone. But I also advocated for the students to return to the buildings because I believe in keeping the main thing the main thing. We need to educate our students and online, it didn't happen.
Tough question. This, this one's certainly a, a personal one for me. So my, my daughter started, uh, you know, kindergarten, um, that, that year. And, um, you know, it's been really rough. You know, I, I'm glad you're in a different place. You know, our family continues to, to deal with, um, for that. So it's, it's a tough one. You wanna keep the students and these little ones, these babies, center of all the decisions we're making. You wanna keep the community, all the stakeholders, the staff, everybody safe. But these babies, they don't get to do overtime. So.
I, yeah, I mean, I'll be very honest. I, no one wanted their kids back in school more than me. I had three kids in three different rooms, second, fifth, and eighth grade. And, you know, obviously, there was a fallout from learning. But I will say that I actually spoke at the board against going back to Glenfield because my daughter was there and I spent years in that building. I did the fundraising for the house and I was in there at least once a week. There is no working ventilation at Glenfield. And guess what? There won't be until probably 2027. So if we had a COVID disaster in six months, um, you have no working ventilation at Glenfield. It would be practically unsafe for everyone in the building. So I think we have to be, have to look at the facts. We have to put any traffic in our buildings, uh, for it to be safe. And if you, um, if our kids are a priority, we need to start making decisions as a board member that prioritizes our kids. So I think this is a very loaded question because Sean and I probably haven't talked about this, but we probably have a very similar experience, um, with the fallout of COVID and how it affected our family.
Okay, back to Group B. How will you support the LGBTQ plus students in the district? Do you think the district needs to do more? Jada?
Yes. I think it's an easy one, yes. They, along with all of our other students, deserve to have equal rights, equitable access, the support's in place. This is where the board and as board members, we can effectively affect change. We can put in policies. We can help find the resources. We can ensure that we have the right people in place to support these students and begin to support our teachers so that, the teachers and staff, so that they in turn can turnkey that. So, you know, yes, there's, there's a lot to be done. Not, there's not a single student, a single child in this district that doesn't deserve better out of each one of us.
Andrew?
Yes. It's another easy one. The, the question is, where are the board policies in this regard? And I, I don't know. I believe that we, well, I should rephrase that. I hope that we have new policies in this regard amid any problems we're experiencing, our problem segmentation. And those are areas for which we hold the superintendent accountable and he or she holds the district, the staff accountable. If there are places where we can improve policy, since that's where we touch this, then those are definitely areas that deserve our attention. This is one of those areas where student representative, uh, student representation, not just one representative, is key. They will bring to us the information that we need to make these appropriate policies. And quite frankly, this is also a reason why I'd like to see the student equity advocate position returned because he or she would also be able to inform us.
Eric?
Yeah, I agree with, with Andrew. I've spoken earlier about the, getting more feedback from our students and the student representative. I agree with Jada as well. One specific area of concern is that I, and I haven't done the research on this, so I don't know, but I know it's a concern among some students, that bathroom facilities should be appropriate for all students, no matter what their gender, identity is. And I'm not sure that, uh, that is adequate in all of our schools. So I think more investigation needs to be done and that's probably something that we can do pretty, pretty quickly.
This is the last question for Group A. What measures would you recommend to improve the foreign language instruction in all levels? Sean?
I, I need a little bit more information on where we are with our, our foreign language instruction before answering that question.
Holly?
I mean, I think the board, you know, the responsibility, right, is the curriculum. And I think you have various curriculums that are being used out there. So I think streamlining that would be probably a, a step in the right direction. I can only talk about, you know, the, the foreign language program as a parent. I've had kids in both Spanish and French with varying, um, levels of success. So, um, I think it's something that we should really look at. You know, how are foreign countries speaking five languages and we can't even, um, you know, pass a basic, um, you know, conversation with someone after four years of French? I mean, I think there, it would be great to look at. And I'm sure that teachers and parents can offer something.
June?
This is an area where we actually have had community members study and present recommendations to the board. One of the things is to have foreign language on a daily basis all the way through schools, not just, uh, a couple times a week or every day for a couple months and then not again till the same time next year. We also must have teachers who teach a foreign language teach in that foreign language. We do not do a good job of teaching our children how to speak or teaching them how to hear the foreign language if they are learning how to speak that language in English. It's a big cultural shift and a curriculum dynamic shift that needs to happen. Thank you.
Okay, final question for Group B. What ideas do you have to ensure adequate support for students with special needs? Andrew?
The, uh, there was an audit recently of the, the department serving the students and it had a collection of recommendations. I'm not familiar with it. I do believe that that process of going through and seeing what we need to do to serve our students has to happen. This happened. Have we followed through with that? I have not, perhaps I'm just not remembering, but I don't recall seeing a recent discussion at the board level on whether or not the recommendations are being followed and if they're being followed, what the results of those have been. That information needs to be before the board so the board can see whether, whether it might be making additional improvements or whether the changes that have been made, whether, if changes have been made, whether those changes that have been made are adequate. have been made, whether those changes that have been made are adequate.
I think, excuse me, I think our support for students with special needs is improving. There's a relatively new director, and I think she's doing a really good job. I think our parent professionals need the supports because they are critical to the students. And I think teachers need to read and scrupulously follow all IEPs. So child study teams need to meet over the summer. We need to adapt IEPs and 504s as needed. And then we, the superintendent needs to be sure that they're being followed. I think we're doing somewhat better on this, but there's certainly more room for improvement.
Finally, Jada.
So to both of your points. One, the audit itself, we actually did another audit. We hired two more consultants since that time. And while there's been some small improvements, bringing in a permanent director, there's a lot of room to grow. And I think a lot of it goes to ensuring that the folks who are doing that work understand what it is. As it sits today, we still don't have a clear understanding of what our programming is. We don't know, you know, we're out here, we're hiring consultants to do all kinds of work. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. One of the pieces is the communication to the parents themselves, having an understanding of what the programming in cases, when you're looking at programming, and then ensuring what those follow-ups look like. So there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that's out there, and it's too vast to sit here and say, but I will say we are moving forward, but very slowly.
Okay, now on to our one-minute closings in reverse order from the beginning. Eric, you're at first.
Okay. In closing, this is my last race. I am not going to run again. I can, I've built, I can build and should build on the three and a half years of experience I have, on the work that I know I've done over my career about how to unify people, how to bring people together, and I think that's what the district needs. I will be working diligently, hopefully with new partners on the board, so that we can ensure that some of the transparency, accountability, town hall meetings, selection of the superintendent that knows and respects and can move our district forward is something that we can do in a unified manner. You've asked a bunch of really tough questions tonight, and I always shuddered when I was the first one in our group to answer. Being third is a help. So thank you very much to the League and to the Montclair Local for bringing us all together.
Do you have extra time? Jada.
So I love Montclair, right? I grew up nearby and I brought my family back here. I think this might be my last race, too. I didn't know it was going to be all of this. But honestly, I do, I love this community, and I love the community that was created around my children being in the district. And so for me, you know, I'm not going anywhere else. I'm not looking for this to be a stepping stone. I honestly want us to do better by our children. I want our teachers to feel respected and feel valued. I want our students to feel safe. I want our community to feel like a community again. And, you know, I'm a very honest and blunt person, so you all will get to know me, you know, but I want to have those honest conversations. And I'm just hoping that, you know, if those values, if those ideals are what entices you, you know, then please support, you know, what I want to do is just to bring Montclair back to where we were.
Andrew.
I've been volunteering with the district for a while, as I mentioned earlier, and that's what this is also. This is really no different than offering to do something and that people in the PTA decide whether or not I'm going to do it. In this case, it's the voters of Montclair who are going to decide. I will stay involved no matter what. There've been some great questions asked this evening, and our answers have all been, to use Eric's word, utopian. That's not always how it works, unfortunately, and we all recognize that. We need to move in a direction that brings us closer to our ideal world, but the world doesn't stop. For example, with the strategic plan, I would have approved it despite the fact that we didn't really have as much time as we needed, despite the fact that it was missing certain pieces. It is intended to be a living document, and we can keep moving forward while we're also continuing to make the necessary improvements. That's what I'm hoping to achieve.
Holly.
I, thank you. I think my utopian view of our Montclair district, we're going to go down this road. I really love Montclair. I love its diversity. I love the teachers that, who have stood beside my kids. I love the, when I've called principals or that they've answered my calls, talked to me, and we've problem solved. I think that we can only make it better, and I think collaboration is really important. Communication is really important. If we involve our stakeholders, it will make us better. This is an incredible district with amazing people. I am someone who is very practical. I have empathy, and I have common sense, and I think that goes a long way on board. I also have come alongside Eric and Jada, who I think are really incredible people. Eric asks really thoughtful questions and gives a lot of insight that I found really rewarding on this run. And Jada, besides being super fun, is very in tune with, you're fun, too, but really in tune with what's going on in our district. Great, great intelligence to tap into for curriculum and special ed and various resources. So I hope you vote for us.
June.
Montclair is a place where everyone loves their diversity. Diversity is our strength. It also makes it harder to educate our children because we're a district that's committed to differentiated learning, and that's having different learners from different levels in every classroom. That's much harder for our teachers. It's much harder for administrators. So we need to embrace our diversity, but we also need to do much better in making sure we actually do educate every single student. I have been to board meetings for 14 years. I have volunteered in many, many capacities. I know a lot about the district, and I care about the district. One of the things that's great about having this elected board is having so many people be civically engaged and ask questions and be more interested in our schools. That's been exciting and wonderful, and I hope that you will vote for every student thrives.
And Sean.
Fantastic. A lot of great questions tonight. Really appreciate League Women Voters and the community for the time tonight. I started my opening and I shared something, and it wasn't a throwaway, but I'm a mama's boy. And so I got to talk about mom a little bit. My mom is, she's beautiful, she's smart, she's hardworking, she's a trailblazer, she's unapologetic. She is, she's in the Journalism Hall of Fame. My mom amplifies the voices of underserved communities and has a track record of doing that. My mother is a leader. I am a mama's boy, so I get it from my mom. Like, I am here to represent this community in the most authentic way that I know how. I'm here to advocate for underserved voices. I'm here to bring folks together. I do bring talents from the business background that I have, and I think our board will benefit from it. Our board does need more operational efficiencies. It does need to behave in a way where it does a better job of setting goals and driving accountability. So these are things that I bring to the board. So if anything else, just vote for Mama's Boy when you go there, no matter what, as well with June and Andrew. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Okay. Before I begin closing remarks, you can applaud. Okay, to conclude, thank you to the candidates for your time this evening and for stepping up to run for this very important role in your community. I'd also like to thank those tuning in and those who took the time to be here tonight for this important event. Good luck to you all. Thank you to tonight's sponsors, the Montclair Area League of Women Voters, the Montclair Local, along with all the community cosponsors. I'd also like to thank our timekeepers, as well as everyone who worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make this event possible. As a reminder, no other recording of this event for any purpose is permitted. As agreed by the candidates, this recording can only be shared in its entirety. Using portions or screenshots is not permitted. The event has been recorded and broadcast on Global Channel 34. The recording will also be available in its entirety on the League's website at lvwmontclairearea.org. For those here this evening, there is information on the table about where and how to vote. Everyone else can visit the League's website or your county clerk's website for more information about your area. Most importantly, be sure and vote. Make sure everyone in your household votes. Ask seniors in your family or neighborhood if they need a ride. Elections are too important to miss. It's been my pleasure to be here tonight to moderate this event, and I enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you and have a good night.